This is a regular meeting of the Borough Council, the Borough Seaside Park County, Ocean State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, August 21st, 2025, advertised to begin at the conclusion of the work session meeting, which has ended moments ago. Pursued to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Ocean Star on January 3rd, 2025. Notice of the meeting that governing body also has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call?
Councilmember Ammfield?
He's out ill this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Condos?
Here.
Councilmember Connor?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Here.
Council President Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Pearson?
Here.
Thank you.
Let us all rise together for a moment of silence to be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda seeks approval of the minutes for August 7th, 2025, a work session, August 7th, 2025, a regular meeting. I'll make the motion. Motion for approval by Councilmember Kraft?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is a request for approval of the special meeting minutes. The special meeting held August 5th, 2025, in a closed session. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Connor?
I'll second.
Second by Council President Wilk. Roll call?
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes, but I abstained from a portion that I have left.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraft?
I abstained. I was not present at this meeting.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is a public hearing. It's for fiscal year 2025 budget amendment, and in accordance with law, I will turn the floor over to our clerk, Jenna Jankowski, for the budget amendment resolution to be read into the record.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-291, resolution of the Borough Seaside Park in the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the fiscal year 2025 municipal budget. Whereas the local municipal budget for the year 2025 was approved on May 1st, 2025, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas NJSA 48:4-9 permits the Borough Council to amend the budget after the public hearing, and whereas it is determined to be desirable or necessary to amend said budget, now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough Seaside Park in the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, that the following amendments to the approved budget of 2025 be made. In the current fund, under anticipated revenues, under miscellaneous revenues, Section A, local revenues, interest on investments and deposits is going from $75,000 to $293,999.57. Beach badge revenue is going from $1,800,000 to $1,938,000. Under Section B, state aid without offsetting appropriations, the energy receipt tax is going from $201,445.06 to $208,980. Municipal relief fund is going from $32,313.17 to $21,540.06. Under Section F, special items of general revenue, public and private revenues offset with appropriations, municipal alliance on alcoholism and drug abuse, the local share is going from $1,667 to $0. Ocean County Barney Get Bay Sewage Pump Out Vessel Program is going from $0 to $70,000. The local recreation improvement grant is going from $0 to $90,000. The recycling tonnage grant is going from $0 to $4,502.88. Fiscal year 2023 NJDOT grant Bayview Phase II is going from $0 to $222,645. Clean Communities Program is going from $0 to $13,713.80. The Community Energy Plan Grant is going from $0 to $10,000. Under Section G, special items of general revenue, other special items, the American Rescue Plan is going from $134,751.79 to $0. Total miscellaneous revenues is going from $4,015,512. Sorry. Four million. Subtotal general revenues is going from $5,090,512.27 to $5,718.716.56. The total general revenue is going from $13,050,222.79 to $13,678,427.8.
Thirteen million.
Thirteen million. I'm sorry. Thirteen million, six hundred seventy thousand, four hundred twenty seven dollars and eight cents. Under appropriations, general appropriations, A, operations within the caps, other code enforcement, other expenses, is going from $10,000 to $53,000. Uniform construction code appropriations offset by dedicated revenues, construction official salary and wages is going from $185,000 to $290,000. I'm sorry, there's another page. Deferred charges and statutory expenditures, municipal within caps, under deferred charges, over expenditure of appropriation is going from $0 to $10,826.65. Over expenditure of trust fund is going from $0 to $16,427.20. Over expenditure of the grant fund is going from $0 to $36,380.76. A, operations excluded from caps, public and private programs offset by revenues, Ocean County Barney Get Bay Sewage Pump Out Vessel Program is going from $0 to $70,000. The, sorry, local recreation improvement grant is going from $0 to $90,000. Recycling tonnage grant is going from $0 to $4,502.88. Fiscal year 2023 NJDOT grant Bayview Phase II is going from $0, $222,645. Clean Communities Programs going from $0 to $13,713.80. Community Energy Plan Grant is going from $0 to $10,000. D, municipal debt service excluded from caps, payment of bond anticipation notes and capital notes is going from $0 to $5,700. Total general appropriations is going from $13,050,222.79 to $13,678,427.8. Under the Dedicated Water Utility Budget, number 10, dedicated revenues from water utility, elevated tank leases is going from $150,000 to $415,679.34. Total water utility revenues is going from $3,050,000 to $3,315,679.34. Appropriations for water utility, the debt service, interest on bonds going from $12,000 to $14,400. NJEIT loan principal is increasing from $594,242.79 to $689,350.04. NJEIT loan interest is going from $130,575 to $115,967.50. USD level debt payment, $108,777.96 to $108,778. Deferred charges and statutory expenditures, under deferred charges, over expenditure of appropriation is going from $0 to $140,14.05. Over expenditure of capital appropriation is going from $0 to $12,159.25. Over expenditure of capital appropriation is going from $0 to $30,606.25. Total water utility appropriations, $3,050,000 to $3,315,679.34. Be a further resolve that the 2025 current year capital budget shall be amended to reflect the addition of bond ordinance 2025-15 and capital ordinance 2025-13 for various marina capital improvements and acquisitions not previously provided for in the capital budget. The roadway reconstruction of J Street is necessary to raise the road's elevation to improve drainage and upgrade storm drainage. The security cameras included in the marina capital improvements are necessary to upgrade outdated equipment and enhance the security of the marina. Be a further resolve that the attached form as promulgated by the local finance board shall represent the amended capital budget for the year 2025. Be a further resolve that the resolution we filed forthwith in the office of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for certification of the 2025 local municipal budget so amended. Be a further resolve pursuant to NJSA 48:4-9 that this complete amendment in accordance with NJSA 48:4-9 be published in the Asbury Park Press in the issue of August 14th, 2025, and that said publication contain notice of a public hearing on said amendment to be held at council chambers on August 21st, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Brian Marsh, Jenna.
That was simple. That's why I brought the big bow.
And we welcome, this evening we have with us our CFO, Jamie Coulson, and I thank her for all her hard work on this budget amendment process and the final product. I thank Councilmember Kraft and his committee, as well as the entire council, all of whom contributed along with our administrator, Karen Crone, everybody worked together for this final product now for a public hearing. So, anything at this juncture, either from Jamie, from your perspective, or Councilmember Kraft, or anyone else? If not, thank Jenna for reading into the record as required by law. So this being a public hearing, I will entertain any public comments from the public, if anyone has them, if they could give their name and address into the record. Hearing none, I would close the public portion and, yes.
It's not about the budget. Is that okay for me to speak now or no?
No, this is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2025, public hearing budget amendment. Hearing none, public comment, I would entertain unless anyone in the council has anything at this juncture.
No.
I'll make the motion there. Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second him.
And second by Councilmember Connor. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
And next on the agenda is Resolution 225-292, which is adopting the 2025 municipal budget. Any comments from council? If not, do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Condos?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rotunda. Roll call?
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, and thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are the ordinances. We have first reading and introduction ordinance 2025-19, providing for the acquisition of stormwater maintenance equipment and appropriating $1,700,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,700,000 in bonds or notes of the Borough Seaside Park to finance the cost thereof. Any questions or comments from council?
No.
If not, it's a first reading, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion there.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second.
Second by Council President Wilk. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, we have first reading and introduction, it's ordinance 2025-20, providing for the replacement of the stormwater system on a portion of K Street and appropriating $875,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $875,000 in bonds or notes of the Borough Seaside Park to finance the cost thereof. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion, this being a first reading?
I'll make that motion there.
Motion by Council President Wilk?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kraft. Roll call?
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, we have first reading and introduction, it's ordinance 2025-21, appropriating $50,000 for the rehabilitation of wells, as per the discussion at the work session and the proposal related thereto, having been submitted by the RB engineering firm. Any questions, comments from council, if not a motion?
I'll make that motion there.
Motion by Council President Wilk?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call?
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Members D and E are interrelated, and that falls upon the discussion at the work session and the research having been undertaken by the committee with the recommendation from the Code Office. D is first reading and introduction ordinance 2025-22, amending the Borough Code of the Borough Seaside Park so as to amend Chapter 364 entitled Rental Property, and as originally envisioned, that's been amended somewhat to express the range of penalties, a minimum of 500 up to $2,000. Any other comments or questions from council, or if not a motion?
I'll make that motion there.
Motion by Council President Wilk?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call?
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is first reading and introduction ordinance 2025-23, amending the Borough Code of Borough Seaside Park so as to amend Chapter 3 of 3 entitled Mercantile Licenses, and again the same amendment as per the discussion at the work session to be filed. Anything else from council at this juncture, is this a first reading, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion there.
I'll second there.
Motion by Council President Wilk, second by Councilmember Connor. Roll call?
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are the resolutions and, or start that, authorizations. We have Event, American Angler Association Fishings Tournament, and that is Sunday, October 12th, 2025, rain date, Sunday, October 19th, 2025, 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, the Ocean Beach area. Second is Valor Supplements LLC Local Summer 5K, Saturday, September 20th, 2025, 7:00 AM to 12:00 noon, Stockton Avenue, Boardwalk to Brighton Avenue, Fifth Avenue to 13 Streets, Ocean Avenue from Brighton Avenue to Fifth Avenue, and that would, if granted by the governing body, would require, be contingent upon approval of a permit from Ocean County. The third is CR Foundation Food Truck Wine Festival, that's Central Regional, Saturday, October 4th, rain date, Sunday, October 5th, 12:00 noon to 6:00 PM, Marina Long, that too, if approved by the governing body, would be conditioned upon a provision of submission of an updated certificate of insurance. The third is the Seaside Park Historical Society Meetings, dates September 8th, October 6th, November 3rd, December 1st, 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM, council chambers. E is ECK, E-C-K-E, I may be mispronouncing, Birthday Party, Friday, August 22nd, 2025, rain date, Sunday, August 24th, 2025, 5:30 to 7:30, J Street Beach area. F is Semper Fi Run, Saturday, September 13th, 2025, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, location, the Boardwalk, Porter Avenue to D Street, if granted, that would be conditioned upon an agreement that beach access shall not be limited. Also, it would be conditioned on approval of obtaining an Ocean County permit. Any questions, comments from council on any of the authorizations? Hearing none, I would entertain those authorizations then with the conditions as read into the record in the applicable ones as a consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Connors?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos. Roll call?
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are the Payment of Claims, 2025-293, approving payment of itemized claims as set forth on the check registration bill list for the period of time, August 8th, 2025 to August 21st, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion there.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second it.
Second by Council President Wilk. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are the resolutions, and I'll read in summary fashion. 2025-294, authorizing the adjustment of designated water sewer accounts, Block 91, Lot 9. 295, approving the adoption of the revised employee handbook, the Borough Seaside Park. 296, authorizing the renewal of travel accident insurance. 297, authorizing the police chief to apply for the state body armor replacement fund program fiscal year 2025. 298, authorizing a non-fair and open contract with Gary Kubiak and son, electric gate for installation of a new pole and amp service. 299, authorizing online auction service agreement with Municipalid LLC. 300, authorizing the sale of surplus property no longer needed for public use on an online auction website. 301, authorizing the purchase of 1, 2026 Ford F-250 for the Department of Public Works from New Jersey State Contract. Number 24, Fleet, 103120. 302, requesting for permission for dedication by rider for Recreation Trust Beach activities required by NJSA 40:48256. And 303, authorizing Leamington Vernic Engineers to provide consulting engineering services for the rehabilitation of Well 8. 304, authorizing membership in the Seaside Park Volunteer Fire Department for two new members. Any questions, comments from council on any of the resolutions?
I just wanted to make one comment only because Jamie's here, I've made it before, but I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate those certificate of availability of funds on all the expenditures, it helps us a lot, because then you don't have to question and go back and forth, so, thank you for doing that, I think that's a major improvement in our overall process here, so, thank you. Said it before, but you weren't here to do it for us.
Thank you, Gina. Anything else from council on any resolution? Hearing none, it's not required by law, but we allow public comment on resolutions as well. If anyone has a comment on any individual resolution, they could give their name and address into the record. Hearing none, I would close the public portion, unless anyone in council objects, I'd entertain a motion as a consent agenda for the resolutions.
I'll make the motion there.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second him.
Second by Councilmember Connor. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And that concludes the resolution agenda, and that concludes our written agenda. Any other items for submission from council?
Mayor, I have a quick report for Public Works Committee. While, while number 11, we had a site meeting with the DDP last month and are waiting for the completion of their technical review. We passed them later, Wesley Breakwater, a schedule to begin on Monday. At the Public Works Meeting, last week, two members of the Citizen Basement Committee were in attendance when we went over the plans and ideas for the basements and internal projects, the trim is being replaced at the Borough Hall. I guess that project will take a while, but it's in progress. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Mayor, I also wanted to just make a comment, I know I've talked about it before, we were waiting on the Seaside Park Board of Ed for the elementary Board of Ed, they did send us correspondence yesterday, so hopefully we'll be looking to schedule a meeting with them in the near future so we can continue the conversations that we started about the potential transfer of the school building to the Borough as they had offered.
Very good, thank you.
I have one item, Mayor.
Yes.
The, at the marina, the north breakwater at the entrance to the marina coming from seaward, that work is going to commence on Monday with replacement of that breakwater.
Very good.
So we won't interfere with any marina activities inside the marina, the work will be performed outside on the base side of the marina. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, following up on the, on the school, they did approve our use of facilities for the holiday bazaar at the school, so we'll be indoors again this year.
Very good.
However, we can't use the bathrooms. They put that in the letter, their bathrooms are rather tenuous right now, so they're worried if a lot of people use it, they'd have problems, so.
Which, we did.
We'll have to. We just got that. We'll do something.
Anything else from council at this juncture?
I don't know, Councilmember Connors, did you want to talk at all about potential recreational thing that we discussed?
About the?
Halloween?
Yeah, Halloween. We, I can, I mean, it's like a...
Just a nice day.
Yeah, it's a nice day.
Potential nice day. Potential nice things are always nice.
Okay, Gina.
Glad you're being heads off.
He didn't need a heads off, he's very enough.
No, no, we had looked, it's been mentioned to us, me, us, about trying to resurrect the scarecrow building contest for Halloween, so, so I initiated some conversation, we talked to some people, and I think it's going to happen, we're working out the details on being able to do that in conjunction with the trunk retreat and also the parade, right?
Yeah, the PTA sponsored Halloween parade and activities are typically the Sunday before Halloween, so if we can do it, we'd like to.
So we're looking at dovetailing that, with all that, and announcements for this will come out, when all that comes out also, and also we'd like to include, obviously, the scarecrow building contest, and looking at having it at Central, we're looking at having it in there, which is close to where all the other events are, for those other events there, the trunk or treat and the parade, so that kind of works hand in hand, and we are conically going to be able to bring back something like that, scarecrow, which has been, was a tradition for a while, so it starts this year again, and then we'll just keep it going from here on out, keep the tradition going, so, yes. Thanks, Gina.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank the committee for all their work. Anything else from council? Hearing none, I'll go into the audience if there are any public comments, if anyone has any, if they could give their name and address into the record.
You can get up there.
Hello, my name's Clara Cezon, I live at 62 Decatur Ave, Seaside Park. I'm here today for some concern... I'm here today for some concerns, and I'm sure you all have some of these concerns about the drownings and what's happening at the Stockton Avenue side of the beach. I'm not sure what's happening at the other end of the 13th Ave, but I know I'm on the beach quite often, and at 5:00, and then you like to come down and view what's happening on our side of the beach, it's really a little despicable. People are coming on free, and more people are coming on at 5:00 than are on the beach all day in lots, in lots of situations, especially on Saturday and Sunday. And my concern is, I've been speaking to the policemen on the beach, I've been speaking to the lifeguards on the beach, and some of the people who, you know, work in the beach. And just for instance, just last weekend, one of your employees was walking down with a child back and forth for about 20 minutes, one of our lifeguard employees, and they didn't come find the parent. And I yelled out to him, you know, can we help, what's going on? And he said, we have a PA system, and his answer to me was, go to the meeting tonight. Okay, now, I've been a resident coming to the park, not resident, I've been coming to the park for 45 years, and it's a beautiful place to be, I see the best kept secret of the Jersey Shore as far as I'm concerned, and I like to keep it that way, okay? So my input to this is, I've been told from some of the police officers that we don't have an ordinance to tell someone not to go into the water, but Seaside Heights does. What do we need to do to get an ordinance? We have an ordinance for coming onto the beach with a dog, we can give them a ticket, that's beach. We have an ordinance that they can't go on the dunes, that's ticket. Why can't we take the people in the water after 5:00, when our lifeguards are no longer on duty? I don't know about you, but it's very frightening to watch what's happening. And I know one night in particular, there were seven calls in a half hour to, from our rescue team, which is fire department, as you well know, and our police department. And I've also been told from many lifeguards, when they hear those sirens go off, they're coming back because they feel obligated to, and that's their, that's the type of people we have. Our lifeguards are phenomenal, they will, are wonderful, they're afraid to go to the slow mill after, after 5:00, because if the whistles get blown, they will have to come out. And it's not fair to them, not even just fair to us, but what as a community are we doing to help this? Seaside Heights, we know it's blocking their gates, okay, stopping people from going on the beach, what can we do to stop this in our town? As far as I'm concerned, this weekend, it was all over Facebook, Seaside Heights Park is open 24 hours, go there if you want to go swimming. And the people unfortunately that are coming to swim really don't know what the waters are like, and it's because they don't want to pay to come onto the beach. I know our prices are the same as Seaside Heights this year, that in the past probably deterred them a little because they would go over to the Heights because it was a lot cheaper, and now it's not that way, they met our pricing. So I'm just concerned, like, what is happening? You know, we don't have a PA, we used to have a PA system, and it was before Sandy, and I was told a while ago, because this is not the first time I've been in front of some people here, I went to first, bought my home in Seaside Park, I went to a meeting with, I forget the councilman's name, I'm sorry, he's retired, oh, he was red, he's not retired, that's right, he's still here retired, not dead, okay, so I'm looking at his name right here. And I did meet with two, and I met with the administrator, because I was concerned, all the money we're spending on, on our saves, could we have lifeguards? And the lifeguards are going to work till 6:00, I've talked to lots of them, okay? So how much money are we spending? And the answer to me at that meeting was, we don't put a price on a life. And my answer to him was, I worked in New York for many years, at the end of the week, we knew exactly how much it cost us if something happened. So what is the budget that's being spent on saving all these people who do not go in our waters after 5:00 when there's no lifeguards? So I'm really, really concerned about this, and I thought I would have a lot more people here today, because I've been speaking all over the beach, but of course, I think the weather deterred everyone, I came down from North Jersey just to come to this meeting tonight. So I don't know, like, you know, what do you have to say as council people? What are you seeing? Like, you know, what's happening to our town? I want to keep Seaside Park the best kept secret, it's not happening anymore, okay? There's tons of people coming, they're drinking, they're smoking, doing things that they shouldn't be doing, and are our cops are free to go up to them? That's my question, okay? And because of cameras today, videoing everybody, I don't blame the cops, our cops do a great job, but what's happening is really scary. So my point to you is, what are we doing to help this situation? And with the drownings, I mean, right here in our backyard? So what else can I, I don't know if there's anything else that can be said, but that's my concerns, if anybody else has anything of input that's going to the beach and sees what's happening? And I'll be honest with you, in the past, I always stood down by 13th, 12th area, I put a home on Decatur, so now I am in the mix, and I love it, my block is beautiful, we have wonderful people there, we've been there for 40 years, I don't want to see this end of the town go downhill, and that's what's happening. So this is my first time really speaking about it, I don't know if you're input, or what can we do to help this? Is there, is there an ordinance that we can pass that they can't go into the water? If there's an ordinance for the, for the dog walking or the dunes, is there an ordinance that says they can't go in the water? Can the cops tell them not to go in the water?
I can give input, I don't know if our attorney wants to take it, or our police chief, or any of all, but certainly, I don't know who said it, but I would second those sentiments, how could you put a value on a life? I know we've got a whole host of dedicated individuals, not just the lifeguards who are great, have been there the last few days in particular, but our police department, the Charbo First Aid, and the Skubareski Team, and all the members of the fire department, are a great team, great assets to have, and protecting all of us and visitors from all over.
But what are we doing to continue to protect our town in Seaside Park? You have an ordinance that dogs can't walk on the beach, you have an ordinance that says they can't go on the dunes, why can't the policemen go? They're coming up and down in trucks now, and the four by fours, why can't they say get out of the water? I don't understand, what's the legality of that as the attorney? What is the legality of that? Why can't they do that?
Can I give it to you?
I want to get a whistle, start a whistle myself on the beach at 5:00, to be quite frank with you.
You want what?
I want to get a whistle, start a whistle myself on the beach to help me get the hell out of the water, it's really scary. When you're watching people go in, you don't know what they're doing. I go up the beach at 5:00, because I don't want to be there anymore, to worry that I have to feel obligated to go in to help somebody. I mean, it's really scary, or, you know, I don't know.
I mean, I can't answer, I don't know if Steve is going to answer or not, he's.
Absolutely.
Sounds like he's not, but I don't know the legalities, I know that some of us on the committee for beach have talked about it, I don't know that at this point in, you know, mid August, we're going to change it for this year, but I think that there has to be discussion, we did talk about the hours, that people are up there, so I mean, I, obviously, I love the beach as much as anybody else, and I understand what you're saying, you know, talked about, I personally think 5:00 is probably too early for the lifeguards to leave, because we all know that people stay up there, it's kind of the golden hour if you're here, you want to be up there now. So we'll have to address how that gets managed, if we decide to change the hours. As far as, you know, you know, there's a lot of patrol up there, I just think that it becomes something that we have to really give a lot of thought to, because it's, in my opinion, it's a very slippery slope once you start, I'll just use the word legislating human behavior on things that, you know, you can't legislate the common sense that people should have, and if you do it for one thing, where does it ever end? And I personally am not in favor of blocking the beach, I mean, I know that our neighboring town says that. I mean, we do a lot of activities up there at night, we do hike night, you have families who sit up there and bring pizzas, it's a beautiful place to be, so like, I personally do not want to see us shutting access to the best asset that we have here, because few people are going to do stupid things.
Against the public, shut down.
Yeah.
No, and I was against it, but what is stopping a police officer from being on the beach and saying please get out of the water? Why can't we do that? Is that against the law? Returning there. Is that against the law, Steve? Hello?
Sam, I apologize, but we have a five minute limit here over there.
I'm just looking, we, the rules and regulations with regard to the beach are part of the municipal beach access plan that's approved by the DEP, so I was just looking on our website, I don't have it memorized, to see what our municipal access beach plan says.
Okay, well.
So that, that's where, that's where we would start with regard to, that has to be approved by the DEP. That's available on Lloyd's. I just don't have it in front of me. Yeah, that's what you're saying.
All right, well, I might open the.
And then with regard to any other, any other restrictions with regard to the beach, that would be a discussion with the mayor and council, considering the public trust doctrine and other, other issues.
And this, this is the worst I've ever seen, and I've been here for 45 years, and your police, and your firing, and your, are doing a wonderful job, and your lifeguards, but they're all willing, I mean, for them to tell us to come to the meeting, it's a little scary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will someone get back to me on some of the answers for? Oh, yeah, that's, 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 that's question. But will someone get back to me for some of these answers, or what is the policy on this?
Well, I don't know if there's answers to get back to other than this document, but I mean, the others are things, things that we'll have to discuss and come up with.
Who makes the decision?
Our beach access plan is a public document, it's a lengthy, however many pages, we're looking at it right as we speak, it's, it's online.
I mean, I mean, we've heard you, we have the beach operations committee and on it, and I'm the chair of it, so we've heard you, I understand, and, and honestly, I'm not debating it, but two years ago, it was awful, okay? It was awful two years ago, so, and even worse, so, so I think as Gina said, we need to sit as a committee and figure out which way we want to go, maybe extend hours, see if that's going to help. I don't know, extending it one hour, people win at six and still do the same thing, so like Gina says, you can't legislate a lot of things and hope that it'll take care of it, so, but I'm not.
To get in front of it, that's, that's the situation, I think, and like, I know when you said two years ago, but it is a lot worse, I think, with the amount of people that are coming on the beach at 5:00 this year.
I'm not going to debate that, I, I worked it two years ago, so I understand, so the thing is, is that I think the bottom line is, is that we can act as a committee and find out what we can do.
Well, can the public be advised to help the committee, you know, make some of these decisions, or it's just, it's just the committee apparently makes a decision?
Well, once the committee, once the committee, I'm sorry, Gina, once the committee meets and we figure things out, then we bring it to a work session, and we bring it out at a council meeting, and then there's ample discussion that can occur from what we are looking at potentially doing, so that's where the dialogue goes back and forth, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments, Mike? Here's hand up earlier.
Mike Spatafino, 59th Avenue. It's just a matter of clarification, when I go down to the, to the boardwalk, to the beach entrance, and there's the flag, if, if the surf is dangerous, we do put up a red flag even up on the boardwalk, right? Now, does that flag, red flag stay up overnight, or when the guards leave, they take it down?
Typically, the badge, on a typical red flag day, when the guards leave, when the badge checkers leave, because they put the flags up at the lifeguard's direction, they'll take those down. Yesterday and last night and today and tomorrow, they're standing up 24 hours.
Yeah, and I think that that's the way it should be, because, I mean, let's face it, stupid is as stupid does, but at least if there's a warning there, that takes a little bit of liability off of you in any way, that, you know, you're informing the public that even as they approach the beach, that the surf is dangerous, and it's at your own risk, I mean, you can't stop people from being stupid, so keep the red flags up.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Edie, like 4811, that's a totally different topic. Has to do with the ordinance 2025, retaining the $1,700,000 acquisition of stormwater maintenance equipment, and I noticed, I mean, I don't understand a lot of this legal stuff, but the one thing I noticed, it's talking about issue for the acquisition of stormwater maintenance equipment at the Borough, including without limitation, the stormwater inlet vacuum truck, the mechanical sweeper, street sweeper, blah, blah, blah. Do I remember that we were going to do a shared thing with the Heights for a street sweeper?
Yes. But this will be our equipment, and it's out of a $2 million, 100% forgiveness, principal forgiveness.
So are they going to?
It's not costing us.
Well then, so they're not paying anything?
Seaside Heights.
We already did that one, we have a shared street sweeper, a shared service agreement with Seaside Heights.
Yes, is it, yes, correct.
This one's not being shared, this is our own, this one's not being shared, this is our own.
It's a different type that's more applicable to our.
That's correct, it's, it's mechanical.
Will this fit in the whole bar?
It does.
Yeah, we made the whole timer.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I would close the public hearing, I'd entertain a motion from council for German, unless there's anything from council.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Council President Wilk?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rotunda, roll call.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Craft?
Yes.
Will you approve?